I will, uh, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-four. And to start, pleasure allegiance, Commissioner Millard.
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the principal from Edison Middle School, Amanda Springer. She has been in the district for the past twenty-four years. Principal Springer started her career at Edison Middle School in two thousand, where she spent fifteen years as a seventh grade teacher and four years as an academic learning coach. Two thousand nineteen, Amanda had the opportunity to continue being an academic learning coach at Franklin Middle School until the principal position opened at Edison. Ms. Springer earned her bachelor's degree in science from UW Oshkosh and a master's degree in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch. Principal Springer, who do you have with you tonight?
It is my pleasure to introduce Brody Thostkinson, a seventh grader at Edison Middle School. Brody's teachers describe him as an awesome individual with a great sense of humor, and I would second that with his jokes that he shares with me at lunch. They also shared that he is a very hardworking individual, very kind, a true role model for his peers in always putting forth his best effort. And I learned today, Brody does not know this yet, but he was nominated for our student recognition breakfast for first quarter, and that celebrates students who exceed our eagle expectations of respect, responsibility, and engagement in learning, so congratulations.
Oh, she's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's finished with a joke. I will call to order the budget hearing on the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five proposed district budget for the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, through the posting of notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-four. Anyone wishing to speak can do so, if you wish to speak on the budget. Anybody wish to speak on the budget? Anyone wish to speak on the budget? Okay, we are adjourned from the budget hearing. Let's move on to three point one, consider a motion to adopt the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Board of Education agenda. There's a motion and a second. Let's vote on the screen. That passes unanimously, seven to zero, Commissioner, eight to zero. Commissioner Dahmerhausen is absent. Let's move on to the safety message.
After yesterday, I feel a little strange with this message, and the weather was nice today, but are you prepared for the heating season? Hopefully not, but a few things to make sure that we're prepped for the heating season for safety and that of your family. Get your heating system inspected and repaired if needed. And as a side note, I'm often during the heating season, carbon monoxide ends up taking roughly around fifteen hundred people just in the U.S. Annually, so please get those heating systems inspected. And additionally, as we think other safety tips, we can think of the furnaces, but the chimneys, fireplaces, all are part of the equipment that needs to be inspected every year by a qualified professional. Keep anything even remotely flammable away from fireplaces, space heaters, and furnaces. Mentioning space heaters, often particularly the space heaters of old, they ran hot and the cards associated with them were extremely hot. So if you have one of those, throw them out, just get a new one, because they absolutely can cause fires, and we definitely don't want that. Teach kids that areas near any heating source are no play zones. Purchase a non-flammable barrier to shield children or pets from heating sources. Do not use an oven or candles to heat a home. Do not use the oven or candles to heat a home. Fuel burning. Heat sources such as furnaces and fireplaces should have proper ventilation to outdoors. Do regular checks to make sure the vents are clear, such as after snowfall. Never run a generator indoors or use unvented heating equipment. Install, test, and make sure your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors are in good working order. Always follow manufacturer's recommendation for replacement of batteries and equipment. They don't last forever. Purchase a fire extinguisher too. Practice using it and make sure you have the right class of fire extinguisher for the hazards in your home. And I know we talk fire, and one thing to note in what we've learned with fires, particularly in modern homes, they burn quicker and hotter. A lot of the modern layouts are a lot more open, so the fire travels quicker. And then as to makeup of the equipment, they burn a whole lot hotter than homes used to burn. So just things to keep in mind. Thank you.
Well, daylight savings is a week and a half away, and so stock up on your nine volts to change out the smoke detector batteries too, right, Kevin?
My thanks, Chris. I mean, Michelle. All right. Student presenters from the Rock University High School, Gabby Richter. Is Gabby here? Come on up, Gabby. You got some supporters back there?
It's good? Okay, cool. Sorry, okay. Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent Holtzman. My name is, oh my God, sorry. My name is Gabrielle Richter, and I've had the pleasure of attending Rock University High School all four years of my high school career. First, I'd like to take a moment to talk about my past and why I chose RUHS. For as long as I can remember, I have been breaking and/or fracturing bones. Due to this, my schooling has always been pushed aside constantly, sometimes causing me to fall behind my fellow peers. It forced me to work ten times as hard just to stay on pace with them. By putting in more effort, it did make me work harder as well as dream bigger. I have a huge, I have huge plans for my future. I plan on becoming a criminal attorney, and I needed a place that allowed me to shoot for the moon and that would support me so much that they didn't need to tell me if I failed to aim for the stars, because they had faith in me, they had faith in me that I wouldn't fail. I needed a place to believe in me when I couldn't believe in myself. And this place was RUHS. RUHS was a pretty big shift from middle school for countless reasons. The first thing I noticed was and was shocked by was the freedom of our class scheduling. The first, personally, I love the college-style scheduling due to the fact that none of my days look the same, except for Tuesday and Thursday, which I end up leaving at three fifteen P.M., compared to my Mondays and Wednesdays, which I'm actually in class until nine P.M. Not having the same schedule every day really allows, really improves RUHS, in my opinion, and gives students a sense of freedom. With only ninety students, the smaller class sizes also allowed me to build lasting relationships with my teachers, which was great, because I said I'm often injured. This ability to connect with teachers helped me not fall so far behind when I was injured. For example, two years ago, when I was involved in a car crash with a dump truck that, sorry, that should have taken my life. As you can clearly see by me standing here, it didn't, but the accident left its lasting marks. And this accident also did more than damage me, it caused my schooling to fall greatly. But with the help of staff and so, and so much support from Erin Jensen, Stephanie Virella, and Dr. Hernandez, I can proudly say that in June, I will be graduating with not only my high school diploma, but also half of my criminal justice associate's degree, which is amazing, because after the accident, I didn't even think I was going to be graduating high school at all. Three of my peers are also on track to graduate with their degrees before they even graduate high school in June. Thank you for this powerful opportunity, you are changing lives. During my time at RUHS, I have been involved in two classes that have allowed me to be involved in events and organization, both statewide and internationally. Great Will Text and Critical Issues Forum. Great Will Text is a program run by UW Madison where schools across Wisconsin all read one book for students to then create and share a unique project based on the themes of the novel at the college's yearly conference. I took the class this year, and I'm so thankful that I did. I created a novella with my friend Claire DeKoff that won us first place at the conference. There's more to gain from the class besides just making your own project. You get to see how students from different backgrounds interpreted the book from their own, from their own point of view, which is why I think the class is so amazing. Critical Issues Forum, also known as CIF, is another amazing class that allows international connections from, between students in Japan and Russia. The class revolves around youth activism and conversation of nuclear disarmament. It is hosted by Millbury Institution of International Education in California. Every year, CIF offers two of our students the opportunity to attend their conference in California or Japan. It is a class that I've taken for four years at RUHS, which allowed me to be one of the students who attended the conference in person. Last year, I was one of our representatives who traveled to California, and this year, we're headed to Canada. There, we'll speak to international students who are just as passionate about this topic as me. CIF will definitely be a staple of my memories when I look back on my high school years. RUHS's environment allows students to create and foster domestic and international friendships and diverse social circles that go deeper than other schools normally would. The friendships I have formed the last few years are ones that I know I will have for a lifetime. RUHS is also a middle college. That essentially means kids are strongly encouraged to take college courses during the high school years through Blackhawk Technical College, our affiliate institution. During your first two years at RUHS, students can expect to mostly take high school courses. However, it is expected that students take AP and TC or transcribed credit courses. TC are essentially, are, sorry. TC courses are essentially Blackhawk classes taught by RUHS instructors to earn college credit. After the first two years, you should have earned all or most required high school core credits. Blackhawk is where you get the remaining credits for graduation. Students can choose from a wide range of programs offered by the college, and because of the two-year duration, some can complete their associate's degree before their high school diploma. While RUHS does not, while RUHS does provide an accelerated curriculum, it's crucial to remember that all students, not only those who are considered academically gifted, are given the opportunity to succeed. Our system's best feature is that neither the kids nor their families have financial burden. Three hundred and sixty-eight college credits were obtained at RUHS last year, saving students fifty-five thousand tuition. It would take too many words to accurately express how important RUHS is to many individuals, including myself. RUHS's students and family thank the district tremendously for the wonderful opportunities given to our students through the funding at our program at Blackhawk Technical College. This year marks the tenth anniversary since RUHS became a charter school. On December eleventh, we will be hosting a Red Robin ceremony with an open house from five to seven P.M. Please consider attending. We would love to have you as a guest. I sincerely appreciate your time and ongoing support for RUHS. Thank you.
Hey Gabby, Gabby. If you would take time, one at a time, introduce who's here to support you tonight.
Oh. Sorry, okay.
You know, you know these people, right?
Sadly, yeah, yeah, no. So first is my dad, then my brother, then my, oh my God, I'm dying, sorry. Then my sister, then my mom, and then my friend, and then my friend's dad.
Great, thanks very much for being here. Next, from Rock River Charter School, Jeremy Doyle. Jeremiah.
Nervous, y'all, don't mind me. Good evening, Mr. Holtzman and School Board Commissioners. My name is Jeremiah, and I'm a seventeen-year-old senior. I attend Rock River Charter School in the e-learning program. Before coming to Rock River Charter, I attended Parker High School. I was always in and out of trouble, having no motivation to be at school. I felt Parker wouldn't be the school to help me grow. Two of my sisters were attending charter at this time, and one had already graduated. Talking to my mom, she considered charter to be the best school for me moving forward. At Rock River Charter, I am in the middle-of-the-day section of the e-learning program. I am in a very full class with other students working on other classes like me. Currently working on class, I'm currently working on classes for business English B and senior seminar. I have two credits left. At Rock River Charter, my plan is to graduate early. After I finish the e-learning program, I will be transitioning to college to study vet tech. I am looking at Madison College next fall to pursue my degree in vet tech. Rock River Charter School's current enrollment is at two hundred seventy-two students, spread between four different programs, including OTS Ed, Ramp, e-learning, and the GED L two program. Our enrollment is up from last month, when we were at two hundred sixty-six students. Our current waiting list for placement at RRCS stands at a hundred and two applicants between four programs. Up from eighty-five last month, we have graduated eighteen students so far this year, and are expecting around twenty-five more students to graduate, including myself, within the month. Rock River Charter School continues to be a great option for many students in the school district of Jamesville. Rock River Charter School has had a busy September. We had twenty-four students attend the Wisconsin Education Fair, where they were able to meet representatives from colleges, universities, military branches, and specialty schools. Learn about tuition, tuition fees, and majors, and get information about financial aid, scholarships, and grants. Additionally, a volunteer cooking, baking night was held in which seventeen students participated and baked cookies that were donated to support community meals. Thank you, Parker, for, thank you, Parker High School, for allowing us to use your family consumer education kitchen. Finally, Rock River Charter School raffled off baskets to students as an attendance intensive. The students, the seven baskets raffled off included a bake, who, my bad, a baking basket, a card detailing basket, a coffee basket that included a Keurig machine, a basket full of beauty products, a basket full of sweets and treats, a basket that had a pair of JBL wireless headphones, and a basket that had a hundred dollars' worth of gift cards to local restaurants in the area. Rock River Charter School would like to extend a big thank you to Project Sixteen Forty-nine for the generous donations towards the baskets. Currently, conferences have been, have begun. We are unique because we hold conferences three times per year instead of two. We take pride in the fact that our parent-student participation rate is at ninety or higher, ninety percent or higher. Looking ahead, Rock River Charter School staff will be spending their November fourth professionally development day, taking a tour of Blackhawk Technical College, learning about the wonderful opportunities BTC has to offer. RRCS students will be participating in the job fair that will be taking place at Parker High School on November fourteenth. And the member, members of our title, one staff are planning three parent-student events with the beginning, a bingo books and night. As you can see, Rock River Charter School continues to be an excellent place that provides amazing opportunities for students like myself. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to, the opportunity for me to speak tonight.
I kind of stutter sometimes, so excuse me if I stutter. Hello, members of the school board. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to tell you about Arise Virtual Academy and all of its great opportunities, opportunities that they offer students. My name is Jayden Savoy, and I'm a freshman in high school. This is my first year at Arise, and I really do like it. At, here at Arise, they have a variety of courses that need to fit the needs and interests of students. They have six advanced placement classes for kids who need a challenge, for kids who need a challenge. They also give you a chance to earn college credits. Besides AP classes, Arise also has career-focused programs. Students can work in areas like dentistry, cosmetology, hospitality, I think that's all it is, tour and tourism, cybersecurity, and education. These programs are meant to teach real-world skills and help us get ready for future careers. Arise also has several world languages, like American Sign Language, Chinese, French, German, Japanese, Spanish, and Spanish. Learning a new language can open up new perspectives and help improve communication skills. For students who need to make up credits, Arise offers credit recover, wait, credit recovery. Sorry, I lost my place. Credit recovery in important subjects like algebra, biology, chemistry, English, and U.S. history. This way, students can track and succeed. I believe Arise focuses on offering a well-rounded education, whether you're enrolled full-time or just taking a few courses. They work hard and give everyone a great learning experience. They also know how important it is to meet your teachers in person, so students get a chance to visit the lab once a week, and elementary and middle school students can meet with their teachers on Tuesdays. And high school students like myself can do the same on Wednesdays. I like going to the labs because I can get help if I need it, or I can review things with my teachers once a week. One of my favorite parts about Arise is that they plan fun, yet educational field trips to make learning more exciting. This October, we're having a Halloween party in the lab at November, on Ilba, in November. Students will visit Whitewater Aquatic Center, and in December, we'll go to a performance of Andy at J-Pac, where some of our own students will perform. Arise Virtual Academy offers a range of courses and experiences that helps all students succeed. They are dedicated to helping each student reach their goals while also building a strong community. Thanks again for letting me speak and represent Arise Virtual Academy.
Citizen comments. So far, I have one form filled out, Krista White. Krista? Okay.
I was waiting for the long spiel beforehand, but the rules, I guess. All right, so when I come here to speak here, it's, come to speak here, it's difficult for so many reasons. Oh, yeah, sorry, it's been, I didn't come last meeting. All right, Krista White, forty-one thirty-one South Tracy Road. All right, so anyways, coming here and speaking is difficult as a former teacher, parent, and district resident, but, and this environment, but also because there are so many issues. but, um, and this environment, but also because there are so many issues to bring up in only three minutes. So, today I'm going to focus in on evaluations. So, how do we evaluate, um, every, you know, anyone that works for the district? You know, everything related to, you know, making sure we have the best people, um, gauging the abilities, you know, what me, what it, success looks like, what it means, setting goals, um, you know, at the very top in, of our district, so our employees at the top, um, and then, you know, trickling down from there. But, so who is in charge of evaluating who? That's a question, um, that many of us have. What and how, and how often are, um, administration evaluated? Okay, and then, uh, I know yesterday, um, if I remember right, it was admitted that, like, there's not an evaluation process for coaches, um, either, you know? So, I guess, uh, just wondering, um, I think, finding a way to implement that process, you know, more consistently, uh, makes it clear for, obviously, coaches, administration, whoever's being evaluated, but those that are, um, you know, being evaluated, and it's just, like I said, going to trickle down from there. So, and if there is an evaluation process, uh, for administrative positions, um, that's either not happening or needs to be revisited based on the statistics in the district. Teachers utilize rubrics for evaluation of their students daily. You know, that's something that, you know, we do. It's clear for students, makes requirements, expectations. It makes the teacher, you know, like, you have to write it so you know exactly what you're looking for, what they're looking for, and how, then there's the clear, how did you do? What can be improved? Feedback is a huge part, right, of any position, any job you have, um, and in communication, you know, is important in all areas. And, um, with this, I just ask you to take the time to address, create, implement, um, and infect, an effective evaluation process for administration. With the high amount of money going to salaries there, uh, you know, and no money to spare in the district, no accountability. Having accountability and clarity is the bare minimum, um, of this ask. It feels like the issues are often superficial or only money-based, but until you, you improve the top, um, you know, the rest of it's not going to matter. And you can maybe minimize those little discussions with improvements as well. Thank you.
Next, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. And we're going to vote on our screen. That passes unanimously, eight-zero. Thank you very much. Let's move on to board items, five-point-one. Update on the twenty-twenty-four third Friday count. Kim Perrinbo.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, the memo in your board packet outlined a majority of what we're going to talk about, uh, this evening with the third Friday count, which happened in, uh, September, because it's hard to believe it's already October. But this year's twenty-twenty-four third Friday count, uh, put us at nine-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-one students, which was a decrease of thirty-two students from last year's third Friday count. Our kindergarten enrollment declined by ninety-two students. They are currently our smallest class size in the district at five-hundred-twenty-six students. Our largest class is our senior class at eight-hundred-thirty-five students. Our ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders are enrolled in the seven-hundreds, and our first through eighth graders have enrollments in the six-hundreds. Our staffing plan matches really well with our current enrollment, so that is something to be really proud of. Uh, there's only two elementaries that do not have a hotspot, and those that don't have that hotspot, even if we were to reduce a teacher, that would put us way out of our teacher-to-pupil ratio. So, they are staffed very well. Our middle schools are almost spot-on. Marshall's over one student, I believe Edison's under five, and Franklin was under one, which is pretty miraculous. And our high schools look really good with staffing as well. Craig is down forty-one, but if you spread that across the four-grade levels, that's about ten students, and there's just so many variables there with the classes, kids do or don't take. And Parker was down by thirty, so about seven per grade level. Um, when we look at our open enrollment in, we are taking in the most students from Beloit, uh, at a hundred-and-twenty-nine. Evansville is second with seventeen, and Orfordville Parkview is next with eleven. And when we look at our open enrolled out, while we go back and forth quite a bit with Milton, um, them taking in two-hundred-some, us losing two-hundred-some, we only lose about ten to Milton, but it is Edgerton that we lose thirty-four to, uh, regarding brick and mortar, and then, uh, McFarland and Merrill, which have two very popular virtual academies. And we've talked before that not all virtual is built the same, um, so they just offer some different flavors that draw those families there. So, that's the current update, but I'd open up the floor to any questions anyone may have. You're welcome.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, just a couple notes. Uh, really, the budget does not compile, um, just by me, right? So, there's a great number of thanks that need to go out. Certainly, the director's group, uh, Julie DeCook, who's a member of the coordinators within Learning and Innovation, worked closely with Tammy Carlson related to title funding, which is approximately over two million dollars, uh, that she works with, uh, Tammy on, Julie DeCook. Kim just provided you, uh, this is Perrinbo, with an overview of the third Friday count. Throughout the year, we obviously have our third Friday count. In January, we'll have our second Friday count. So, thanks to Kim and her team, and especially Rachel Monson, who really pulls together the admin assistants, um, from our buildings to count all the students we have, uh, in our facilities. Special thanks really to Matt Sylvester Knutson, our Director of Finance, and again, Tammy Carlson, who's our Fiscal Analyst Grants Manager. The Finance Committee, three of whom are here this evening, right? Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Millard, um, and Treasurer Audrey. So, they get to hear me, uh, a little bit longer than the PPC Committee Commissioner Paul, right? I think we met a few weeks ago, it was about an hour and a half. Uh, we're really kind of digging into, uh, some of the elements of, of the budget as well as other business. Some themes, I think, and these are things that I've shared with, uh, the board before, right? Is, you know, we're probably within Business Services, never particularly happy with our budget process, not because it's bad, but really in the spirit of continuous improvement, right? So, and also, when we're looking at the budget, we're not necessarily looking at a fiscal year, right? We were closing a fiscal year, opening a new fiscal year, and we're always looking into the future. So, we'll be sharing, uh, come December, um, some items related to our forecast model, right? So, keep in mind, forecast models don't always paint a rosy picture, right? They're very conservatively based, and certainly dependent upon, uh, what we'll find out in February and through the spring of this year, the next biannual budget, in terms of how we're beginning to prepare for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, right? So, a lot of work we put in this year is really always forward-thinking. And again, we really try to, I appreciate the discussions we have, um, within Business Services, with our partners in curriculum instruction and Student Services, and really working, we're not there yet, but always working to prove, to align our resources, really to our priorities within the district, and of course, I have a quick slide on that as well. So, those are my introductory comments before we really get into it. Uh, this is information you've heard pretty much every year. The format is relatively the same. You're provided, uh, a great deal, um, so certainly, as we go through, if you have questions, feel free to stop. Otherwise, I'll talk quickly. Uh, it's still a cool evening, but beautiful nonetheless. All right, uh, we have four priorities, right? And so, how are we funding? So, does our resources really align with our mission and our priorities? Are we there? I would contend that we're really working to do that. Our number-one priority, right, and I think, uh, Dr. DeGraff appreciates this, right? Is it's about instruction in the classroom. How are we supporting instruction in the classroom? Certainly, there's staff excellence, operational excellence, and then the value partnerships we have, uh, with our community. We have two, maybe three goals, right? Reading, we'll go through these quickly. Uh, math, and I should say literacy, right? You can tell a business manager did that slide, right? Uh, and then certainly attendance. As we move into this year, right, a couple influencers, everyone should be aware, right? We are in year four of a four-year non-recurring referendum that's valued at three million dollars, right? So, we should really be thankful for the community for supporting that, right? I'm not sure what we would do without fourteen-point-five million dollars in our budget, which is why we have a question on the ballot come November fifth. Uh, we also, through the state authority, received an additional three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per student, per member, I should say, right, and revenue limit authority. Uh, we did experience a zero dollars we had the last few years in a per-student categorical aid, right? The state sought to really invest in the district's revenue limit authority, each district throughout the state. Um, instructional or staff investments really are key, uh, particularly at the elementary and secondary levels. And as you've heard throughout your tenure here on the board, we're really focusing on those transition grades, small class size, um, Ms. Perrinbo made reference to that during her report. And then certainly, uh, we've increased our investment in special ed. You saw that in the spring. Um, I think we were north of an additional seven FTEs to meet students' needs within the district. Um, that certainly is rolled into the budget, right? And then we continue to, and this is something we wrestle with, it's something we wrestle with every district, I should say, throughout the state, and that's the ability to attract and retain talent. Um, just a quick side note, um, I did some, you can actually go on, right, shocker to the internet, and you can pull out UW System graduates by college, right? So, if we look back in time, you can run it by year, and the College of Ed pretty much continues to produce the same amount of students as they did five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. There's some ebb and flow. Well, what I think that tells us, right, because the applicant pool, and if you listen to Dr. DeGraff at one of our community forums, she'll talk about the Limited Act, um, the limited pool of applicants. People may graduate with a degree in education, but they're choosing careers elsewhere, right? So, that is the challenge, right, for us to continue to attract and retain staff. Couple high-level numbers, right? We're in year four of four, an additional three million. Fund ten is balanced, right? It's always part of our budget priorities to bring to you a balanced budget. If I brought you a deficit budget, right, perhaps I would not be standing here. Uh, Fund twenty-seven is balanced, that always has to balance, that'll balance at the beginning, that will balance at the end. Keep in mind, there's always a transfer from Fund ten to Fund twenty-seven to ensure that balance, simply because of the state aid reimbursement, uh, was budgeted to be thirty-three percent, but it's uncertain. So, when everyone spends more, that thirty-three percent actually dropped down to about thirty percent, which means we're receiving less than what was originally committed. Uh, the district's September membership decreased by fifty-seven. Now, thank you for not reconciling Kim's comments with my comments, right? There's a point in time to where we have to lock in, right? So, Rachel probably is still, um, to some extent, maybe modifying, probably not because she's really good, right? But we have to lock in because we need you to adopt the levy based upon those values. Uh, the district's levy is proposed to increase from fifty-point-two million to fifty-one-point-six. You'll see that again, that's essentially about a one-point-three million dollar to one-point-four million dollar increase, uh, in the levy. And the district's mill rate is proposed to increase from seven-oh-five to seven-thirty-nine. At the last Finance Committee, we spent a lot of time on the revenue limit as well as equalization aid components, right? So, keep in mind, what drives the, the mill rate, right? Is increases or decrease in property values, right? So, the city of Janesville, and particularly the school district of Janesville, and to some extent, the school district of Milton, right, saw a decrease in property values. State property values went up an average of eight percent. Our property values went down one-point-eight percent, right? So, very much an inverse relationship. There's an overvaluation of commercial property, that's my understanding. We don't get less, we don't get more, it just really is a factor in the calculation of the mill rate. You've seen this slide a number of times, uh, perhaps not, uh, Commissioner Johnson, right? Lot of factors go in. School finance is not necessarily always linear. There's not one lever you pull and everything falls into a combination. There are multiple levers, from membership to revenue limit authority, equalization aid, all the way down to salary benefits, debt service, fund balance. Lot of factors go into the district's overall budget. Talk a little bit about membership, right? Just as a reminder, right, we don't receive less money or more money if there's a tax incremental district. We don't receive less money or more money, right? If the mill rate goes up or the mill rate goes down. What drives our revenue is membership, right? So, membership, as you may recall, is very different than headcount, right? So, there's a net factor, right? EC, Early Childhood, is a point-five FTE, right? Four K is a point-six FTE because we offered a little bit more, right? And everyone else is a one-point-oh FTE, right? So, we talk a little bit about numbers, I should say, we talk a great deal about numbers, but these are certainly individuals who are in our classroom, right? These are our students, this is our future. You've all seen the photo during the referendum presentations, there's a great group of children, right? Here are watching something, right? We can't see exactly what they are, but they're very attentive, right? They're learning, right? And as we point out, that's our future, that's why we're asking for an investment in our community, because it's an investment in our future. It's kind of our membership over time, right? You know, keep in mind, and I believe this is in the memo that Ms. Perrinbo wrote, right? Statewide enrollment, right, is trending down, right? Parents are having fewer children today than they were in the past, right? Districts, for the most part, are experiencing greater or equal to enrollments that they've had, or less, I should say, than they have in the past, uh, unless you're in Sun Prairie, or Wanakee, or DeForest, right? So, those are three, uh, growing districts. Even when you look to other districts such as Middleton Cross Plains, even if you go over to the east and you're looking at Meskigo, Norway, right? Their enrollments are actually declining, and they're declining in part, right? Because of interest rates and home values, right? So, if you're sitting on a three-quarter-million-dollar home, right, in Meskigo, Norway, you're probably not going to sell that because where are you going to go, right? Certainly not going to Florida, right? And then, so you're occupying a house, right? And then, even if that house came on the market, right, it's three-quarter-million-dollar, half-million, six-hundred-thousand, whatever the value is, right, and interest were high. So, those communities, right, not just, just like Janesville, although perhaps property values are different, right? Are experiencing a bit of an enrollment, um, concern. But again, I say that, and let me correct to where, right, we're still fairly stable, although the kindergarten numbers, uh, are interesting. Hopefully, they'll rebound, uh, next year in first grade. Uh, this is open enrollment, right? So, what you see, uh, if you read that from left to right, uh, right, is you'll see a fluctuation in numbers, and those are actuals, right? So, what happens? So, Ms. Perrinbo and her team will report on the September third Friday count, they'll report in January, but what happens throughout the year is people come and go, right? It's a very, at times, transient experience. So, in June is when we do the reconciliation. So, the values you see on this screen are the June reconciliation values, right? Except for the number on the far right, which is really our budget. So, from a revenue standpoint, we lost revenue last year, right? It was a loss for us, and this year, we're projecting it also to be a loss, right? So, dollars are going out versus dollars are coming in. We were at a high at one point, um, to north of a million, right? In terms of revenue, positive, and that's not the case anymore. And that's what this slide is here. So, we're budgeting right now nearly half a million dollars in loss. Right, so when we look at our balanced budget, that's where we're at. Last year, we lost approximately two-hundred thousand, right? Certainly, we'll be tracking that, that's why the January count is very important, right? But, uh, we need to be very, very cognizant of, uh, of that direction. And hopefully, it doesn't, right? We'll know in June. Uh, the revenue limit, I think everyone certainly understands that. I'll go through this slide real quick. Uh, the focus is, is right, enrollment is the belly button count, and membership, if you will, is our resident account, whether they're here attending or attending a public school elsewhere. Just as a quick reminder, private school enrollment is not factored into our membership whatsoever. Everything typically from a revenue limit also is on a three-year rolling average. Uh, these were, this is a slide we used last year, right? And simply because last year, we saw, if you look to the right, a huge increase in that light blue bar, right? And that light blue bar is really the increase in our low revenue limit ceiling. It was ten thousand, it was increased to eleven thousand. Okay, we didn't have that this year, right? Although there is discussion, there's lots of discussion, again, as we move into the biannual budget for, uh, twenty-five, twenty-seven, but our revenue limit increased, as you see in the dark blue, excuse me, on a, uh, per-member basis only. It'd be nice, perhaps, to be consistent. We shared a video at, uh, the Finance Committee, right? It's, I'd say, a pretty powerful video, it was put together by a number of state organizations, including WASBO, the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials, and we've presented this, um, to where theoretically, I should say, actually, if we were to keep up with CPI, right? We'd have approximately three-thousand dollars more per student than we do today. Three thousand times nine thousand, simple math, is we'd have another twenty-seven million with which to run our district, right? So, that's why we're looking at an operating referendum. So, when we look at expanding opportunities, creating possibilities for our students, right? If we had that... If we had that, we'd be able to do that even more so than we are today. It's pretty simple math, right? I'm not a math wizard, simple math, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division works for me. But we take our three-year rolling average times the revenue limit authority per member, which in this case is 11,325, right? You add in some non-recurring exemptions, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment, and that provides us with our overall revenue limit authority. We're not going to go line by line, right, but we show this every year. We did a little bit in finance, go line by line. But this is the worksheet that every school business official takes them through. What you see on the loft of the screen there is really three-year averages, right? Prior and current three-year averages. And then when we get all the way down to E, you'll see our property value, right? And you'll notice that went down, as we alluded to earlier, by 1.8%. If that went up, the mill rate would be less. If it goes down, the mill rate is more. You have no more, no less money if you levied the same. When we work to the right of the screen, you'll see our base revenue times our membership, right? And then you just continue to work down. You'll see something in there called recurring exemptions, that's G. We have no recurring exemptions. If Milton is successful with their referendum, they will have a recurring exemption to exceed the revenue limit authority. We have no recurring, which means they go on and on and on. So we're at zero. We have a number of non-recurring exemptions, one of which is our operating referendum at 14.5 million. We also have a component of the energy efficiency exemption that we're able to tax for, right? So we'll soon be paying off that debt. There's a slide there specifically for President Murray, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And you have some others. The one thing of note, right, it's just a little over, just under $1.2 million, right? And that is essentially our revenue limit authority, our ability to tax to fund the voucher program in the state of Wisconsin. Then we move down to our limited authority, right? And then we get to the nuts and bolts of it, and that's J and K. That represents our revenue limit authority per Fund 10, Fund 38, which is both within the revenue limit. Then outside the revenue limit, we have our Fund 39, which is our debt service, our community service fund. And then typically, we get a little bit of ability, because of tax calculations and bills, we have the opportunity to charge back. So if someone was over-assessed, we refund, then the next year, we're able to charge back for that. You'll notice a little bit while we talk about it, so you'll see a decrease in our Fund 80. Last year, it was $200,000, right? This year, it's 175, which it was two years ago. So why the drop? So we appreciate the board's support in terms of the position for the Bags of Hope, but that was not hired until this current year. So we taxed for it this last year, right, and we filled it this year. So we're using last year's tax authority to compensate for that position this year. If we were to tax for it again, we'd be ahead of the game. That's not the intent. It's really to support that worthwhile program in the community, right, for essentially the value of that position. Okay, complicated slide, we'll try to work through it, but this is really the effective declining membership within the revenue limit authority. You just see over time the district's revenue limit authority increase, right? Part of it, again, due in part from the increase in the threshold. But this is kind of what our revenue looks like over time. Equalization aid, we will, just the foreshadow, right? A little bit of an ugly worksheet coming up, right? But the more property wealthy you are theoretically, the more aid you get, right? The more property poor you are, right, the more aid you get. Aid is really an offset of property taxes. It's not additional money. You hear me talk about that every year. If we receive more aid, it's not necessarily new dollars to spend. It just replaces a portion of your revenue limit authority and reduces taxes. This is the equalization aid worksheet, lot goes into it, but what this is trying to do is calculate your shared cost. Shared costs are essentially local taxes and state aid. Fees are not a shared cost, federal revenue is not a shared cost. The state of Wisconsin does not want to share revenue with other types of revenue from outside state aid and local property taxes. There's also factors related to enrollment, right, and property values that go into the right side of that very ugly equalization aid worksheet. The good news is, oop, went a little too fast. Still good news? We have approximately, should have worn my glasses, they're in my pocket, about 3 million more in aid. So our shared cost went up, right? The state equalization aid formula went up a little bit, right? But we're all sharing in that. So when we look to the referendums that are on the ballot this year, and you see over $3 billion, right, related to debt only. If all of that is successful, right, the equalization aid formula doesn't change. It's still a shared cost, so we're all competing for those dollars. This is a nice bar graph, like, like much better than the previous slide. And what this does is the first three columns represent primary, secondary, and tertiary aid, right? And then the overall aid. So the blue and gold represent the state's contribution and local property taxes when it comes to aid. So give you a quick example, when we look to the third column, that's tertiary aid. So you see we are aided at 22, nearly 22, I believe it's 21.8%. That's good for us, right? So if we were to go to a referendum and pass 151.8 million, right? It's already been factored in, right, the 22% aid on that. So again, that reduces local property taxes at that tertiary aid level for us. We're not quite to 2/3 funding, that's the far right column, column number four. And if you look, right, we're aided by the state by about 61%. The remaining balance comes from local taxpayers. We'll go through these quickly, right? This is all so exciting. If you look at Fund 10 revenues by source, local, local is not only state taxes. Local is, if you will, our revenues such as gate receipts, mobile home fees, all of that goes into local sources. Other school districts, right, you'll see 5.2 million, that's what we'll receive from open enrollment. Intermediate sources are typically federal funds such as Carl Perkins. State is the state, there's a number of state sources outside of equalization aid. Federal funding, you'll see a decrease, and you'll see a decrease in particular because we have lesser S or dollars to spend. We still have S or dollars this year, we're still closing out a project or two. So that's where you see an increase still yet, and essentially, that will most likely continue to downward trend. And other revenue is just other revenue we kind of pick up. Some of it related to, an example, right, is leases. You may recall, if we lease $2 million in technology, we have to book 2 million in revenue and 2 million in expenses. They're not cash transactions, but we have to record it. We try to abide by GASB, the Governmental Accountants standings board. Fan of Rocky Ricocos, so you get the square pie cut, right? But it kind of gives you a little bit of a visual from a square component in terms of the various sources, from state to local to federal to other sources. Fund 10 expenses by function, right? So keep in mind, right, we're nearly 80% of our expenses are people, right? We're very much a people-oriented business, as I know you know. So when we look at instruction and people services and instructional staff services, so on and so forth, a lot of that is people, right? You may say, hey, you know, business manager, that business line is huge, right? And it is, right, because that's essentially everything from transportation to utilities. I wish it were my department's budget, Kim wishes it was her department's budget, Allison wishes it was her department's budget, but it's not. There's just a lot of things that go into kind of the non-instructional aspects of our district. Debt service is not necessarily referendum-approved debt, that would be lease payments, and kind of, right, so on and so forth, all, all very exciting. Instruction, right, it should be the biggest square. Fund 10 revenues by source, notice transfers, right? So you'll see 12 million, 13 million, 15.6 million over time, right? So did our special ed costs really go up that much? So we have an opportunity to spend some remaining S or dollars, right? We really try to leverage, Tammy works very hard as the program and fiscal manager, but we have dollars, right? So we're looking, we have essentially about a million that will apply towards special ed, which does not impact our maintenance of effort. But Freeze Up is an example, some additional flow-through dollars, which we're able to carry over into the subsequent year. So you see a bit of a tick up in that, as well as certainly we have a tick up in expenses with additional FTEs. So that's why kind of our revenues are up. Local, other districts, state, federal, you know, a majority of it comes from the transfer. And I got a little bit ahead of myself, right? I'm getting a look from Commissioner Hurd, like, did you just say what I thought you said? So I'm going to go back. Okay, we're going to talk about expenses and maintenance of effort on the expense side, not on the revenue side. But we are transferring revenue, so it is driving the Fund 10 revenues a little bit more. Expenses by function, right? Instruction, people services, instructional staff services, some general administration, business administration. You're going to say, what the heck is that? Transportation is huge for us, specialized transportation, right? So it's not the business office. Some central services and instructional service payments. You may say, what is that? And that's essentially services to provide instruction to students, not necessarily within the four walls of our schools. Expenses by function, again, instruction is rather large, which is what it should be. We'll go through some other funds. Fund 38 is our non-referendum-approved debt. Very much approve, or appreciate, I should say, the board's support of paying off that debt. This is our last year in terms of levying for the WRS debt, so that's awesome. So that was a good move, and we'll see a little bit more in the forthcoming debt slide to illustrate that. Fund 39 is our referendum-approved debt. We're running out of debt, another good thing, particularly when you're looking to ask the community for an additional investment. And this is the debt slide, it's like, so let's look at the last slide, Fund 38 for a bit. Remaining payments as of July 1st, 2024, the WRS obligation, right? You'll see the next one, 995 in principal. It's not an interest rate, it's $9,452 in interest, and that retires in 2025. So we're done at this year. We'll have no more debt related to that. The remaining debt really falls into the Act 32 Energy Exemption. So that's a payment that you'll see this year, and that retires in 2027. That, again, is within the district's revenue limit authority. When we look to the right side, we'll see Fund 39, remaining payments, all right? So keep in mind, we still had on the books at one point in time the 2019 refinancing, right, of the 2007 referendum, as well as the, and that's the 2016 General Obligation Refunding Bond. Sorry, we did actually refinance that, but the title is 2016. We refinanced it in 2019, just prior to my arrival. That retires in 2026. The 2026 payment is like less than a half a million, right? But it's out there, we actually skip a year, and then we have about a half million, and then we're done with all of that debt related to the 2007 referendum. And then we look at the 2020 capital referendum, that retires in 2028. And again, that's also a small payment that's kind of deferred out there. Keep in mind that the 2020 debt was issued in 2021 for 15 years, right? And so we'll be done with it in seven. Small to see on the screen, Fund 46, right, is really our long-term capital maintenance seeking fund. When we have dollars left over at the end of the year, we push them into Fund 46. That's typically board action in June. And Fund 49 is our capital project, or essentially our referendum dollars that we still have. We still have some on the books, and we're hoping to, we'll probably be done paying that off before we actually are done spending it. It was an interesting time to embark upon a capital project during a pandemic, and the majority of the work related to our secure pathways was complete, as well as the boiler upgrades. And this last, we'll say, August, September, we finished some additional projects, in particular, fire alarm system upgrades at Adams, Washington, and Rue, and we still have two on the docket. Sometimes what drives our work is the capacity of the workforce to complete the work, right? So that's, that at times is a challenge for us. Fund 50 is our student nutrition, that's a standalone fund, right? I can't say there are no tax dollars that go into funding student nutrition. We don't bill them for the electric nor natural gas that they use, right? We don't bill them for my time, but essentially, they're a self-sustaining fund. And Fund 80 is the community service fund, and I reference this in terms of we're not taxing this year because we didn't fill the position last year, so we'll use last year's funds that are within fund balance to underwrite that position this year. There are some other funds. Fund 21 is really our gifts and donations fund. A lot of student organizations operate within Fund 21. Fund 73, as you're aware of, is our other post-employment benefit, or the Employee Benefit Trust Fund for our post-employment benefits. Fund balance, right? So the challenge with an increasing budget is the ability to keep pace when you are a positively aided district. So board policy is 17 to 23%. We are not at 17%, right? So our revenues are outgrowing our ability to contribute to fund balance. And sometimes, that's something that we need to wrestle with, and I'll give you an example. If our budget grows by $5 million, and if we were to keep pace, we would need to nearly put a million away, right? While we have a Fund 73 OPEB obligation, we have a Fund 46 obligation, and anything that we put into those two funds is aidable. When we put dollars this last year, as we did nearly $800,000, that's not aidable, right? And sometimes I'm a little bit greedy, and I like aid because aid is a reduction in property taxes. And when you're aided at the tertiary level, you're losing, as you saw earlier, just about 22% of that, right? So if we put a million away, we'd lose 220,000, that within our revenue limit authority, we're then transferring to the taxpayers, right? So it's, it's kind of an interesting, I don't want to say game, right? But it's just an interesting tactic in terms of how we approach our fund balance. Now, 16.45, right, we want to grow that. If we have the opportunity to issue bonds, right, that's a component of the evaluation, right? In terms of our credit rating, it's not going to negatively impact, right? But we're just, we're in a tough spot, right? Do we put money in 73? Do we put money into our Fund 46? Do we still put $800,000 away in fund balance, right? It's hard to keep pace in order to maintain that percentage. I think one thing that we'll be exploring and sharing with the finance committee, right, is rating agencies such as Moody's doesn't necessarily look at a percentage, right? There's some other calculations that they take into consideration that I won't go into, in part because they're even confusing for me, right? So I don't want to stand up here and tell you and be wrong, right? But that'll be something we'll bring forth to the committee in terms of, we certainly want a healthy fund balance, right? We don't want it to decline. We don't want to spend for recurring expenses out of our fund balance. But when you have a nearly $9 million increase in your revenue limit authority, as we did last year, to keep pace with that, think of how much we would have to put away to fund balance that then is not aided. So that's our challenge. So I just want to spend a little bit of time on that and not just slide that by. It'll be, it'll be a great conversation, it'll be so exciting. It may be two hours. It may be two hours, so just to forewarn the committee. Dang it, when you carry a slide over, there's a typo in the heading. This is actually our 2024, 2025 levy by fund. The numbers are correct, so let's assert of that. So you'll see the general fund levy went up approximately $2.3 million, right? You'll see the non-referendum levy, now you're going to say, but I, I thought we were getting like a lot of money with the 325. Keep in mind, right, we had a lot more in aid, right, which reduces then that tax burden locally. Non-referendum debt service, we're continuing to see that decline by 110,000. We do not levy in Fund 41, property charge backs you see at 4162. The referendum-approved levy, you're going to continue to see that decrease over time because we're running out of debt, right? The community service levy, 175, for a total levy of 51.6 and change, which is an increase over the prior year of just over 1.4 million. I didn't go into it in this presentation, and we'll probably chat about it at finance, and Commissioner Argeri will have the burden of bringing it back, is, keep in mind, when we set the levy and when all Wisconsin school districts set the levy this time of the year, is we do not know the value of the levy credit. Keep in mind, it's not the lottery credit on your tax bill, but in the upper right hand of your tax bill, which you'll be receiving in about five weeks, is you'll see a levy credit. The levy credit is the state's way of investing in education by reducing the tax burden. We still receive our levy, but as local taxpayers, you will pay less. So you may say it's 1.4 million, right? So I know Ryan's in the audience, right? He's taking copious notes, so Ryan, don't quote me on this. But that 1.4 million that the levy is increasing will be offset by an increase this year in the state's commitment to the levy credit. So taxpayers will not be seeing the full 1.4 million. So taxpayers will not be seeing the full 1.4 million. Now, if you say, what is the calculation? That is the mystery in the state of Wisconsin, right? It is not clear and very difficult to calculate. It's not very transparent, is what I should say. So, real quick, what's the mill rate? We touched on this, right? We take the overall levy, we divide by decreased this year property value of just over 6.9 billion, times 1,000, and we get $7.39. It's equalized. So always keep in mind, and this is something when we do the tax bill review, everything we do is equalized. So I can't predict Commissioner Mallard's house taxes. Now, where I can commit, or commit to and understand Commissioner Argy's taxes, none of your taxes, right? We do everything in the aggregate level, not by individual parcel, nor by community. Well, let's just actually take, because I, I think, I think Ryan's paper gave me a shout out here, or gave the district a shout out, right? So back in 2013-14, right, the mill rate was $10.06. Today it's $7.39. My God, we're miracle workers, right? And the levy continued to go up, and the mill rate went down. Forward, and questions?
Questions? Chris Lott, yeah.
Thank you.
Blessed to work with you, Sean.
Blessed to work with really great people, thank you.
Thanks to the Finance Committee and all that heavy lifting. Mr. Johnson, how are you enjoying your Finance Committee work?
Very much, thank you.
Good. Thanks for doing that.
There'll be something extra in your stocking this Christmas.
All right, let's move on to 5.3, final discussion and consumer adoption of the 2024-
2025 school district budget.
So moved.
Second.
So the motion is, the motion is to adopt the 2024-25 annual budget as presented by the Wisconsin Department Instruction Form 6590. Yes? And yes, and we shall vote. There we go.
Passes unanimously.
That passes unanimously eight to zero. 5.4, discussion approval of the 24-25 school year tax levy. I'd like somebody to entertain a motion as it goes. Motion to certify the following levies. Fund 10, $42,767,13. Fund 38, $2,645,303, I should say. Fund 39, $6,76,882. Fund 80, $175,000. And a levy charged back of $4,164,1, I'm sorry, and a levy charged back of $4,162 for a total level levy of $51,668,360.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, and we'll vote on that one.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously eight to zero. And finally, 5.5. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $5 million.
So moved.
Second.
We shall vote.
Passes unanimously.
Right, that passes unanimously, unanimously eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move on to the Personnel, Policy, and Curriculum Committee report.
Thank you so much. Our most recent PPC meeting, we had a number of presentations. We started off with an overview of the Craftsman with Character Program. First of all, there was a great shout out in relation to the work that Chris Madkey has been doing with that program in our district, so I would be remiss to not pass that on in this overview as well, because that, our program's really been moving along, and, and we know that he's been doing a lot of work with it, so thanks to him. And this is a, we're in our second year with this program in our district. And just a general summary, it is aimed at students' grades 10 through 12 with a focus on career exploration in manufacturing and skilled trades, job shadowing, hands-on learning, mentorship, mentorship and character development, with a variety of past and current partner sites that students are visiting. Students are exposed to a wide variety of these locations in our local business market. They focus on a semester schedule with students currently from Craig High School and the, and charter schools in the Craftsman with Character Program. There's a rotation between Craig and Parker, and then some of the charters. But students are spending roughly eight days with each partner site throughout the semester. One day each week during the semester is spent in class at a lead partner location. Students also spend more than three days, or three-plus days in post-high school institutions in the area. And there's also three days of financial literacy, plus three days of business tours. So they're really doing a lot in these hands-on learning with business and manufacturing in that field. The capacity is maxed to 14 students, and that really is so that there can be high-quality programming for those individuals and really meet the needs of all of the students. So currently, we have students from Craig and Rock River Charter School, and next semester, as I mentioned, Parker and then the other charter school students will have an anticipated 14 students participating. There is a recruitment process each year so that really appropriate matches from our student groups can be brought into that program. And the goal is for students ultimately to transition into our youth apprenticeship programs, and that is, you know, successful. We heard from a former Craftsman with Character student who came and spoke, and I found it really rewarding because it was a young man that I personally had interacted with throughout elementary school. So it was kind of fun to see, and this was really amazing because he was able to rave about the program and, and basically shared how it turned his life around. So it was pretty spectacular to not only hear about this great program, but also see a real-world example of the benefits. So, and just one little shout out that there is some development potential that we could be seeing going on into some other career development with our own district, but using the same program kind of like format. So we might hear some further development down the road. But it's a great program. If you want to hear more, obviously check out the link from our last PPC meeting. Next up, we had a, a brief overview over, about our forward exam results, and not everything had been fully released to us yet, so it was just a general summary. But one thing to note is that the cut scores were changed this year, so data is not particularly comparable to previous years, and that does pose challenges for us. However, we are looking at, the, the district's looking at state trends so that we are tracking where we fall and, and just making sense of those numbers. We have seen some, some of the biggest growth in our fourth grade for the English Language Arts area, which is showing us at above state average, so that's exciting to see. And at our middle level, the strongest area of growth was in our eighth grade for ELA. There were some challenges that have been addressed, and in particular, as we talked about earlier, that the transitional areas, for example, the fifth to sixth grade in particular is where we see some drops, and the district is finding ways to dive deeper into that. So we'll be hearing more about that down the road. For our mass scoring, we did see third, fourth, and fifth graders were all above the state average, which demonstrates some pretty strong growth for our district, and of course, we're happy to see that. And again, eighth grade is where we've seen the strongest gains for our middle-level students on the forward exam. Just in looking forward to, you know, what's next for us as a district, there, of course, is going to be that focus on our sixth grade area as a transition in mass, so that we can look to see maybe why we're getting certain dips and what we can do about it. Our district is continuously working to evaluate forward exams, to make adjustments in what we're doing, and we have a strong list of what our next steps are. One area in particular that we're looking at is our own common assessments and making sure that they are aligned, not just with the state learning standards, but in, to the forward exam and ACTs test, because, you know, if we're aligning what we're doing only on the standards, but we're using exams that aren't necessarily in balance with all of that, we might get some skewed results. So I think it's important that we're, you know, looking at those things and making changes so that what we're doing is meeting our standards, but also is meeting what, how we're being evaluated as well. So those are things that we're doing. Good presentation. I know that we will be learning more about that in the month, next month or so. We also had a nice update from our Benefits Department, and at the time of the meeting, they updated us that 1,517 staff are enrolled in insurance plans throughout the district, and that includes 90 retirees. About 75 to 80% of those people are using the Mercy Insurance Plan. There is a, kind of a new program for this 2024-2025. The Benefits Department has created initiative to, you know, just kind of increase staff excellence and wellness, and so they're looking at different things for the benefits, is kind of an overhaul, but a comprehensive review. So we're gonna be seeing that, they're working on that. Employee education and programming options is one of the things that they're focusing on. Employee feedback as well as an RFP process for our benefits brokers, so that we can ensure that we're getting the best deal annually from our brokers and not just, you know, using the same outfit. So I'm happy to see that. Of course, for a full overview of that topic and the, everything else I've discussed, you certainly can refer to the October PPC meeting so that you can see those full presentations. There also was a long list of NEOLAs policies that we went through, and they were part of our consent agenda tonight, so those were there for you to review. But that's what I have from our last PPC meeting, thanks so much. And we do try to keep it to an hour, just to let everyone know then, since we were talking about length of meeting, but you guys have some really deep things that you talk about. And we do too, but, thank you very much.
Let's move on to the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, President Murray. I, I guess I'd say the first thing is thank you for the committee, and we ran through the approvals for the budget and levy, and it seemed super anticlimactic at this point. We did that in five minutes, and it's really all year to get to that point, so just kudos to everyone making it really simple for us to get through it, and there was really no question, so appreciate that. It was an 87-minute meeting, by the way. We'll go to minutes, because it sounds better. And I think I will start off with the safety message that we have, just as we look at the importance of vaccinations, commenting on updating your flu and COVID and other pertinent vaccinations. That particular day, I was dumb, I decided to get my COVID flu and shingles all in the same day. So that was interesting, but no issues, just sore arms. Much of what we covered, Mr. McCray covered, so I'll just pick up a few little things that weren't, that were mentioned that he did not cover. And first of all, with respect to the, the ballot, the key thing is the questions for, our referendum questions are on the backside of ballot, so remind everybody to flip the ballot, because you're not done just with the first page. And I think one of the more important things is, so what's next? Regardless of the outcome, at our next board meeting, we will be discussing next steps, so, something to look forward to. Then as we look at the capital work that was being done at Franklin, the mechanical systems are functioning well and should have gone live, if not, they will before the end of this month. At Edison, the exterior window replacements have been completed. And Craig and Parker Greenhouse is a target to be in them by the end of this month. I think the other piece that's really, as, as we look at now the timing and capacity to do work, and as that has happened, we, we've really found that we're able to continue to really focus on, well, I'll say some cost efficiencies that Cullen has really helped drive, that we're able to add in some more additional building safety things. So as we look at building automation systems and being able to monitor the status of building temperatures, because that's always a consideration, and you'll hear complaints, well, at least we'll have a better idea of what those temperatures are, where today, eh, you know, we, we don't really have that level of fidelity of the temperatures throughout the building. And I think also going to the referendum questions, you know, we look at, where are we at in comparison to other districts? Well, it's roughly 421 districts, and 58 districts are requesting debt of over $4 billion. So as, now, Mr. McCray really mentioned, since the, our revenue limits don't keep pace with inflation, well, everybody's having to request more from a referendum standpoint. And I guess I need to, additionally, there are 59 districts are looking at non-recurring operational of almost $500 million. So we can see that this is an ongoing issue, that we'll keep seeing that as long as, until it changes in Madison. Lastly, and we had several NEOLAs policies that were, I'll say, brought in line and up to date. No major items there, and that was it. So we look forward to next month's meeting.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Future committee meetings.
Are you looking to me?
I'm looking at you.
Okay.
You looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
Our PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, November 4th, at 4:30 PM here at the ESC. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, November 12th, at 6:00 PM, again, here at the ESC. And the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will meet on, or is tentatively scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November 19th, time and location to be determined.
Okay. We are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.